I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the Secretary from roll call attendance, please.
Here.
I am here. Here. Here? Here. Okay. All board members have received the minutes from the Secretary from the April 4 meeting. If there's no comments or questions, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. Our first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for site plan and special use permit for Subaru of Wapengers. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
We'll move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
My name is Wendy Berger. I'm from the law firm of Cole Schatz. I'm here representing the applicant this evening. This, as you might know, was the existing Mini dealership. We're here today because they're renovating the building for Subaru dealership. If you've passed by recently, you probably have seen the renovations that have gone on in the building. Permits were issued for that renovation. What is still going on at this time is when why we're before the board is to do an addition to the building and some changes to the exterior parking area, et cetera. I'm not a car specialist, but I do know that Subarus are a little bit bigger than Minis. And because of that, some changes had to be made to the site to accommodate them. So in this application, we actually have are reducing the number of parking spaces and making our spaces in size a little bit more conforming than they were before because the cars are a little bigger than the last dealership. So we did have 442 parking spaces. We will now have 430 parking spaces. I have our engineer here tonight to explain the circulation and what's proposed. The addition is for the service area predominantly and a small addition to the dealership floor, but it's mainly to the service area. The building as it stands is staying. We're going to be making some improvements to the landscaping as well. There's going to be striping that's going for circulation around the building. The drainage, we're lucky, we're not having drainage problems on the site, so that's something that we're lucky with regard to the dealership. So we can go over all the changes with you this evening, and I'd like to present the engineer to do so. We did get the board's experts' reports and from the work session, we did make some revisions and provide additional information. So we did get some further comment letters, but I think we've majority of the comments we were able to address in the interim, and we appreciate the board experts taking the time to review that before we got here this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Wendy. As Wendy stated, my name is Kyle Bardwell from the Labella Associates. And first, we were in front of the board last month, and I just wanted to bring up some of the revisions that we made to the plan set following the comment letters that were addressed last month. So we added a vicinity map to our plan set that showed some of the adjacent owners and the zoning districts nearby. We also supplied a memo kind of discussing the oil-water separator design onsite. There was an existing oil-water separator designed by Green Edge back in 2016 with the Mini. We have Chris Morrissey from Green Edge today that can answer any questions the board may have on the oil-water separator design. We also included a refuse detail in our plan set to give the contractors a little bit additional help when it comes to relocating the existing refused area onsite. We clarified our plan sets, EAF, and reports to reference the 11,075 square foot of building addition onsite. We also updated our EAF to state that there are no improvements to the sanitary facilities onsite. We incorporated three new plans into our plan set: a landscaping plan, a lighting plan, and a vehicle maneuvering plan. We can answer any questions the board may have on those additional plans tonight. And as stated, we are looking for a waiver for the parking onsite that's not conforming with the town regulations. Obviously, when it was a Mini, they received a waiver in 2016 for a smaller parking area. We're here looking for a waiver for less spaces. That was approved in 2016 with more conforming sized spaces. At this time, I think we'd open up to any of the board for questions.
If I could, give us a comment about the landscaping, relocating the landscaping. Could you just explain that?
Sure.
Because I think it was a little might have been a little confusing.
Sure. So what we did for the landscaping is we looked at the 2016 approved Mini site, and we're able to locate where trees were located on that approved plan set. We have one small parking addition that interferes with some of the landscaping from 2016. So we show where those trees were and how they were impacted and where we would relocate them to.
So in the process of relocating, if any of those landscaping will not survive, will there be new landscaping replaced?
Exactly. We'll be adding more detail to our notes on our landscape plan stating that if there was a tree lost during the relocation, that it would be replaced in kind. And we'll pull up the details from that 2016 approved plan to see what exact species and size of the trees were.
Do you know what, I guess you don't know what the species are. I was just curious, based on the plans, what kind of trees we're talking about, how big they are, what the feasibility of their moving is, that kind of thing.
Sure. And we'll get all those details from the approved plans, so we can know each specific one.
Okay. Sure. I guess at this time, I can go through some of the comments made in the most recent. If you want to go, yeah. Before we go through the engineers' comments, let me just, I want to make sure that the board members, if anybody from the board has any questions directly regarding this project. No questions? No. Okay. Just want to make sure. But we could go through the letters with the with each of the professionals that submitted. You go ahead. Well, I mean, actually, let's start with let's start with the planner, as he's already discussed some with the landscaping. So while we have Malcolm just run through a couple of his items.
Yeah.
To make sure that we're on the same page here.
The first is related to Seeker, and the planning board previously has decided that we're going to continue with an uncoordinated review. Environmental, I think that everything mentioned in your responses to our previous environmental comments checks out. If you could reach out to DEC and just explain what it is you're doing, supply them with the report from Nowiki, and then forward whatever their response is, which I would imagine we'll read something like, yeah, absolutely. That would be great, and we can square that away.
And we have no problem with that being a condition of approval, that we do that?
Parking, we have already discussed. Landscaping, we have already discussed. Lighting, I had a few questions. One of the fixtures that you have labeled shows a color temperature of 4,000, and it wasn't clear if that was an existing light that you're moving or if that is a proposed light. I was curious about that.
Sure. And it was a very good question, though. So what we're doing is we're relocating some lights onsite. So some of the light poles around the parking areas, we're able to relocate. We're also able to relocate some of the wall-mounted lights. However, we do need some additional new wall-mounted lights to accurately light up our area. So what we did was we looked at that 2016 approved Mini plan, and we're proposing the same wall-mounted lights that were approved and located nearby on the building. So those were 4,000 kelvin back when they were approved.
That makes sense. Okay, so the newly proposed proposed light are just meant to match the existing lights onsite?
Exactly.
And then the pole lights are just being relocated?
Exactly. So if if the board wanted to go to a 3,000 Kelvin, we could for the relocated and new fixtures, we could do that. We feel like there might be a little bit inconsistency between the different lights on the building somewhere.
As long as they're consistent, I mean, that's the most important thing. Like you mentioned, you want them all to be the same.
Right.
I think the planning board would prefer that they're all 3,000, as long as that is not onerous to the applicant.
Some are already existing on the building.
How many?
That are 4,000. So we were proposing to keep the same, but as what's there, that we're not.
I defer to the board. I don't know how many are existing. I don't know to what degree.
There's three new wall-mounted lights that we.
As opposed to like probably at least a dozen or more existing?
Correct.
What do you guys think?
So we're looking at an additional three lights.
Correct.
All right. How does everybody feel with the, no big deal, just leave it at the same?
Okay.
Also, I don't remember, is Barbara? Yes.
Barbara, yeah.
Yes, she had a comment about some lights on the on the ground that were there.
Yes, at the front. Yeah, I saw that that was taken care of.
Yes, we took care of that already, because we did listen to the comment.
Yeah. Well, I think, well, the ones out, you're talking about the ones out on the front from the old display area?
Yeah, she was concerned about some glare out onto Route 9.
Right, yeah. I thought that was addressed with the previous, the previous architectural review for what the work that they're currently doing.
Yes.
Okay.
We've taken care of that.
Okay.
We showed the shields on the lights also.
Okay.
Okay.
So we did listen when she made a comment, so we want to make sure.
Okay, so it's just making sure that the shields were put on there?
Right.
Or replacing them with shielded lights?
Exactly.
Okay.
The only other lighting comment that I have is that, for the most part, their lighting plan is checks out with the code that is being considered by the town, with a minor exception of a hotspot at six-foot candles as opposed to five per maximum. It's not the end of the world if the board chose to waive it. It would also be fairly easy to modify, I think, that if you wanted to reduce that foot candle.
Yeah, I was able to find the exact spot, which lay below.
Sort of tucked in between those two service spaces?
Exactly. So right at the door, and then, you know, just 10 feet off of that door, we get to one foot candle, 1.2, 1.6. So it's really just below the door. We can lift that wall-mounted picture up a little bit just to lower down that candle.
Yeah, I mean, you could do that. I also don't know that the board would mind, given its location and how shielded it is from Route 9 and neighboring properties. It's it's very minorly above what we recommend as a maximum. So it's kind of like the alley between the two buildings.
Exactly. And then, you know, just shortly away from that door.
It drops off pretty quickly.
Yeah. But it could be.
To raise that light just reduces the amount of foot candle power that's going to be out.
At the ground, yeah.
So just raise it a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, we have no.
No, we should, we could do that.
Yeah, okay.
So those were the comments for the planner?
Yep. Okay, so let's have the engineer.
Yeah, we had asked for some additional information regarding stormwater management. They supplied a drainage report. They think with the amount of disturbance proposed, they don't they don't have to prepare full sweep. But they did provide a pretty detailed drainage analysis, which we found to be acceptable. We just asked for a few clarifications within that report. Nothing that I don't think they can provide pretty quickly.
And we will we will make sure we do that. We have no problem making, if any condition of approval, that.
Okay. All right. Okay, and that was just below an acre for the sweep. All right. Okay. This is a public hearing, so, I mean, let's open up the floor at this time. If there's anybody here from the public that wishes to speak regarding this application. There's any questions, concerns? Okay, seeing none? All right. What's your, what's the board's pleasure? Anybody?
Yeah. Make the motion.
Okay, all right. Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make it.
All right. Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so real good. All right. So at this point in time, it's more or less getting us the getting the information back to us, and then making a re-submission. I don't think we can, you guys don't feel comfortable with anything at this point, right?
You could you could grant the parking waiver. That was what he was recommending. If the, I think the parking waiver is valid, and if you wanted to vote on that now, we can move forward with that.
Yeah.
My comments are fairly minor. I'm not expecting anything significant from the DEC. I'd like a response, but I'm not anticipating anything major. What about engineering?
Very minor.
So if you wanted to.
So it's a conditional, so it's more or less a condition is to get the way to get the condition to get the required paperwork from DEC?
Yeah, which would be included in, you know, all outside agencies, and I would name them specifically, but you could instruct me to prepare a resolution for the next appeal.
All right. Okay, so what's the what's the, all right, what's the feeling with the waiver?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to.
So would want to, somebody want to make a motion for the waiver?
Yeah, I'm going to grant that waiver.
To authorize the waiver of the parking spaces?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion to have the planner prepare a resolution of approval?
So made.
Okay, motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay.
Thank you very much. As you know, there's such a long lead time in ordering construction equipment, so we appreciate that because it helps us move it forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So good evening. All right. That one's done. Now, on to the next item. This evening, we have a, next item on the agenda is discussion regarding site plan and special use permit for Myers Corners Road self-storage. Tonight, we're really here just to vote on the resolution of site plan approval.
Correct.
And a special permit also. You received a copy of it?
Yes.
Okay. No questions or concerns with?
The only question I have is nine. I'm not sure, it's the applicant shall fund a post-approval escrow account in accordance with Section 12216? I'm just curious how we establish that. I'm not sure, is that an inspection fee?
Probably, yes.
But would there be any inspections on this?
There'd be probably some minimal for the outside work.
So is that something that we determine later and?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, fortunately, Barbara Roberti's not with us tonight. She kind of handles most of the escrow, actually, due. Hmm? The building department, yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I assume it's just it's the it's the standard post-escrow for inspections.
Okay.
I think I turn to the amount, I reach out to Barbara to what that has to be, you know, that would have to be put in into the account.
Okay, we'll do. Other than that, we take no inspection.
Everything else is good, okay. All right. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the.
So made.
Amended site plan?
Yes, seconded.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda this evening is Central Hudson KM electric transmission line, is to vote on site plan approval.
Good evening. Allison Fauzer from Cuddy and Veder.
Brian Demisko, Central Hudson, project manager.
Okay. Okay, you've received the resolution as drafted by our planner?
We did. No substantive comments, except on page two for the pre-application conference, the date should reflect 2021 instead of 2022. And we'd also request that you, sorry, we'd also request that you change the name of the applicant from Anthony Morando to Brian Demisko.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Okay, get both of those items, Malcolm?
Yeah, I'll coordinate with you.
All right. Okay, so with that said, entertain a motion to approve the amended resolution.
So made.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. That was easy. One page down. All right. Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is Alpine Commons for discussion to discuss proposed text amendments before the town board.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Man Alexander. I'm a partner at Cuddy and Veder. And first off, thank you very much for having us on short notice. As you're aware, we were in front of the town board on April 11th, and we're here tonight, as you noted, for a referral pursuant to Section 24112 for amendments to the town code. I'm joined tonight by Steve Schock from Kitchen and Associates and Brian Donato from Dakota Partners. So a little bit of background, I'm not sure how much all of you have been fully apprised, but Diamond Properties owns Alpine Commons. Since they acquired it out of foreclosure from DLC, you know, at that time, it was BJ's and half of what's the, the, sorry, where the Salvation Army was, sorry. That building's now completely empty. It's 100,000 square feet. So what happened in early January was Jim Diamond from Diamond Properties wrote a letter to the supervisor and town board and basically said, look, we have a problem. And the essence of the problem is that the way the SC zone is written currently, it's not sort of keeping up necessarily with the 21st century conventions of what is light industrial, you know, breweries, distilleries, maker spaces, things that are done. And we started a dialogue from there with the town board. I think we appeared in front of the board in January and February, and it sort of evolved, the dialogue. So what's in front of you, and I don't know, B, if I can pull it up, or I know the package was on the line.
Yeah, I was going to say, probably be best if you can put.
I was going to pull it up, and I can pull it up in a second for the for the picture, but it's really, before I set that stage, what we wind up coming up with is basically three things that are in front of the town board right now. One is we're discussing some additions of uses to the SC zone that are also in the HB zone. You may or may not be aware, but there are only three properties in the entirety of the town of Wapinger that are in the SC zone. There's this property, which is 86 acres. There's that with the Hannaford property just in the north on the same side of nine, and there's one other that I always forget.
The Garmo Plaza, Myers Corners.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It just won't stick. In any event, so those are the only three properties. What, we talked about adding some uses. We also talked about, really, which got into the guts of where the town board directed it, was they wanted to create a village within a village. So building off of the notion that there's mixed use in your zone, in your, sorry, mixed use is a special permit. And then within the SC zone, that is an allowed special permit. We started riffing off of that and created something called large-scale mixed use. Malcolm had a lot of input, John, Jim. This property's already in the sewer district. It is, hasn't been put in the water district, but the water district obviously goes right in in front of us. So the infrastructure's there. You add on top of that, you may be aware, you know, just if you came to Town Hall from the south tonight on nine, right, we have a signalized traffic light at our intersection. Nine is already medianed out, and you have two turn lanes going north, excuse me, one turn lane going north into our site up the hill. And then actually, on the southbound side, you actually have two left-hand turn lanes at that intersection, in addition to two lanes of travel each way. So we have a great infrastructure. We have the great bones, but large box retail's really, you know, it's it's taken a hammering, and I think, you know, never say never, but that's not the way, you know, to take an 86-acre commercial site and help the town, or for us, obviously. So, B, if there is a way to pull it up, or am I?
I'm going to punch break.
Yep. And at this point, what I'm going to do is hand it over to Steve from Kitchen and Associates, who's our planning and architectural consultant, sort of run through it. But what's really important is that you're going to see the flashy picture that's going to get you all excited. That is a concept of what could happen. It isn't necessarily what will happen, because it's a build-out analysis. It's not what's in front of you. Brian Donato is here from Dakota Partners. They're sort of the linchpin. You'll see on the far right side of the page, they have 144-unit multifamily project that they would like to build just southeast of of the BJ's property. That's sort of the catalyst, because they showed up, and the hope is that that keeps BJ's there, obviously very important for for us and for the town's tax base. Bring them in, and then what you'll see is the really exciting part is platforming off of Dakota being there are some other ideas on lots two in particular, which is the AC Moore and the former Salvation Army property. And then some riffing and thought process on how to create walkability and livability through four. And obviously, six is sort of a later phase to it. So immediately, Dakota's here to do five. Thank you. Three already exists, and then the hope is to start creating that energy and inertia. So with that, I hope I set you up there.
Good evening. Again, I'm Steve Schock. I'm an architect with Kitchen and Associates, and I've been working with Dakota Partners on the residential component, and I've been asked to try and give some sense of vision to the conversation that's been going on around reimagining what could happen out there at Alpine Commons. The, again, this is not a site plan that's being submitted as a plan, but, there's no reason I'd lost the connection with that. But you have.
We got it, yeah.
There you go. It's back again. So it's very, it's very difficult when looking at text amendments to simply look at that in the abstract. So the attempt here is to try and give some form to the various discussions that have been happening. With the case of Alpine Commons, what we're really looking at doing is saying that a large tract of land, something over 50 acres, Alpine is some 86-plus acres, has different areas of it that have various unique natures. And what the text amendment sets out to do in a big picture is to allow for a special permit to come in with a development plan and take that site and delineate and categorize the various areas of the site for different purposes and uses. So there are four, four particular areas that can be classified. One is open space. If you've been out there, you know that there's a great deal of space kind of behind as you come in, off the backside of what used to be the AC Moore. That's, most of that is wetlands. There is some developable land back there. So the open space criteria is intended to stay, open space. There are some very low-level uses that are allowed in the text amendments, such as parks, recreation, trails, and also the potential for some very low-impact veterans housing. Part of the. Part of the, part of what the town board was really looking to create was a place where veterans might have, I think it's a connection between this and that. So that's the open space one, so that's fairly easy to understand. The easiest to understand is the straight commercial space, and the only one that's currently shown as a commercial sub-district would be the BJ's. Basically, what we definitely wanted to do is not do anything that's gonna disrupt BJ's. BJ's is a major retailer here in town, we don't want to displace them, we don't want to inconvenience them, we don't want to do anything to scare them away. So BJ's is gonna stay as commercial, and at every turn, what we try to do is go back to the underlying bulk criteria of the zone, so the commercial would go back to the SC bulk standards. The other extreme of the commercial would really be the residential component, which is a sub-district that is recognizing that there are some areas that could be restricted for residential use that are really not suitable for commercial. If you've seen that area that's currently on the plan is area number five off to the right of the plant, it's off the edge of the parking area, there's some terrain in there, it is, there is a mix of some wetlands and some steep slopes, but there is developable land, but not the kind of land that you can do retail in, and the kinds of things that would normally occur in the SC zone. So with the idea of creating the village within a village, as Neil just said, that being able to envision something in the SC zone as having both a live-or-play kind of idea, that these things can all somehow blend and then complement each other, where a property in the SC zone is big enough and has an area that is more appropriate for a residential component than a commercial component, that's what the residential sub-district does. Then for the others, there's the mixed-use sub-district, which recognizes, yes, that it's very appropriate for the commercial uses for which the SC zone was originally created, but also, it could be that those uses are then complemented by having some residential components, or some, you know, so it could be both of those things. Perhaps it's an overbuild, perhaps it's new construction with residential over some retail. So what's happening here on the sketch plan, most of the attention has been spent on what's delineated as sub-district number two, because it's got the vacant, the existing vacant 100,000-square-foot building that used to be the AC Moore. And how we would reimagine this, if you've ever driven up there, you know that the main impression of all of Alpine Commons is asphalt. That's what you've got, a couple of big boxes and a whole lot of asphalt. You're starting to get some trees growing through the asphalt, but it's a lot of parking and a lot of asphalt. So part of what has been talked about, and is shown here especially in the area two, is how can we maintain enough parking to respond to the retailer's desire for, you know, effective parking, for it to support the smaller-scale back retail, but then return a lot of that asphalt to green space? And as is illustrated there, some of the ideas have been a centralized green space that can serve multiple purposes, maybe it's a host for farmers' market events or for other recreational events. What you see here in this sketch is a whole lot more green in the main developed area than currently exists today, because the whole idea of the village within a village is to take this area, yes, respect and encourage commercial development and active retail, but also acknowledge that if you're going to blend in residential, you also need to remember that you're returning a lot of this to the pedestrian domain and not just the vehicular domain. So things like the, there's a rotary that kind of orients the connector road which would feed into the residential area, that's a way of calming traffic. There's a lot of sidewalks and green space and buffers and trees, a lot more greenery is being introduced here. These are all fundamental concepts that have been talked about, Malcolm has shared a number of best-practice exhibits with our team, Diamond Partners, they're also talking about the kinds of retailers that they would like to see. But what you see there in number two is how do we reimagine a big shell of a building with smaller, more intimate retail, maybe some pad-site retail, creating a pedestrian outdoor area in between in front of that building as opposed to cars constantly going back and forth? There's a lot that ultimately would have it, yet with coming back to this board with an actual development control plan, with actual site plan applications to implement various pieces, once Diamond has the ability through the text amendment to do so. But what this sketch does is it starts to show you as a board and the public what could be the future for what is now currently a lot of asphalt. So that's the overall concept. Be happy to take questions on that at this time and pause if you've got questions on that, where we can go through the text, the proposed text amendment itself.
These proposed amendments, would that allow for that fueling station up there, too?
It will not allow for, it will not allow for gasoline stations or fueling stations automotive uses. That was a pretty big conversation, none of the uses that we're talking about in here are automotive.
They already have automotive use up there, right?
No, they don't.
In the BJ's?
Nope.
Where they have the garage?
Oh, they have a garage, yeah.
They got a garage, they don't have, they don't have the gas station, that was, had been discussed at one point, and.
He's also referring to automobile sales, rental, there's a use in there for, you know, accessory lots for storage, those were considered and discounted, that's what he means by automotive-centric uses. Things like the JFIF, which we'll also be looking at later, is allowed in the SC zone.
This would be a good place for BJ's to get their gas station. I don't know, maybe.
Well, we tried to talk them into going in New York space last week, like the last session.
So what the text amendments do, they do a couple of things, they introduce a few new definitions that are relevant to this, and the new Section 240-81.9, that is the special use that defines this large-scale mixed use. It's only applicable within an SC zone and only applicable to sites exceeding 50 acres, so it has very limited application here in the town. And that's what ultimately we come back with a control plan, such as the one that you're seeing here. And within that, that, again, establishes yards, bulk criteria, things of that, that are necessary to allow Dakota to do approximately 144 units on that parcel five, but it also allows for all of the parking and all these other uses and such that you're seeing. It does increase some height, there's some, as you read through, you'll see, why is there a bonus of height? Because any residential in those mixed-use zones, you don't want that to occupy the same ground for a footprint as could be available for retail in a zone like this. What you want is that to be an overbuild. Well, most SC zone, most commercial zones like this are relatively low in height, they assume a big box, one story, maybe one story with a mezzanine or two. But we would, in order to encourage there to be more active 24/7 residential uses, you're gonna have to overbuild that, so you'll need three or four stories on top of that. Other than that, the introduction of the new special zone, there are the mixed, the uses on your table of what's permitted in the SC zone, quite specifically veterinarians' offices, manufacturing, fabricating of repair products, that kind of light manufacturing, and that's really envisioned for that vacant shell. What do we do in the back of house? It's not gonna have retail frontage, and you don't really want to activate that rear of that building, but you do want it to have some active use, and some of those more lightweight type of activities, light manufacturing, some of the storage, maybe a distillery, things like that, that back-up house, they would be very good, though they're not permitted currently. So again, assembling some light manufacturing, microbrewers, warehousing, and storage, and we also are, we're hoping to attract a hotel or motel to the site, so that's currently not allowed. It would be allowed in a mixed-use sub-district of a large-scale mixed-use redevelopment, but this way we can put it as a permitted use in the zone, and then it would have to follow the bulk criteria of the rest of your zone. I think, I don't want to take up too much time, so that's a quick overview of the text amendments and a summary of probably a year and a half's worth of conversation to get us to this point. I know we're all anxious to see something happen there quickly, which is why the town board referred it here, and we'll get back to it.
And I forgot to say a couple of quick things at the beginning, and Steve, you drew that out, and I just wanted, so when you look at, a couple of things we also worked really hard on doing is, first of all, this does not, this new special permit lives with the same amount of coverage as the maximum for the SC anyway, it also lives with the same FAR, so we didn't, actually, we don't gain any development rights, what we really worked hard to do is a couple of things. One was to acknowledge that the site would be an open development area, which means that way, when you see those red lines, those can create lots from, really, from a subdivision financing standpoint, but they don't generate internal setbacks. So setbacks will be measured from the perimeter of the property instead of the interior of the property. So, for example, you wouldn't need a setback between Dakota and, sorry, Lot 5 and Lot 4, you don't have to have a setback between there. So future, so that way they could be closer together if they wanted to, if, when that future use on 4 comes forward, it aligns better with 5, it can lean that way, or if it feels better towards 2, it can lean that way, and we don't have to have internal setbacks. Again, creating that densification, so, and that all tied back to the coverage and the FAR, and then where there is a little bit of a reduction is we've lowered the parking ratios compared to elsewhere in town for obvious reasons. We're trying to green up the interior of the site in addition to all the green that exists on the exterior, so I'd forgotten to note that, because I think that's important for you all as you're thinking about it, is this is not leading to any additional development density than, or coverage really, or FAR than you would otherwise be allowed on the site. It's really to facilitate the village concept and also the uses that are really, where Diamond's getting the phone calls. It was unfortunately not getting the phone calls for where the code was, and that's really, if you go back to Jim Diamond as the, you know, one of the founders and principals in his family's business, his original letter talks about where he's getting phone calls, and it's just not aligning, and then basically asking for the opportunity that the town board has given us to work with the consultants and also come before you to try and facilitate, and there, and I think Steve really pointed out a great point, there was a lot of back-and-forth on a lot of those automotive issues and perspectives, and I think this is a blend of everyone's, you know, wishes and wants, and by the same token, also something that's financeable, and fortunately has, Dakota has sat, you know, alongside this, you know, to come forward to bring the first piece forward. So where we are procedurally, and if I'm not stepping on anyone else's toes, the reason why we're here is in case you have any comments you want to share with the town board per the referral process for zoning text amendments, we wanted to give you a presentation so you can make any comments you feel necessary before our public hearing on May 23rd and from the town board.
Question though, now, where are you gonna get the, you're having a sewage disposal plan on this property, or what are you doing with the sewage?
We are connected, and I think we've done some analyses. When the time comes, we'll know, it's sort of the leading question, right, right now in town, I don't want to get out ahead of myself with tri-muni, but.
Because this is a big project.
Right, but, so the good news is that we have a lot of historic credit, because we had another 100,000-square-feet of retail out there, so I think the combination of that and I and I.
The difference between the retail space and the housing space you have proposed is a lot different.
Yes, and that's something we're going to have to deal with, you know, along the way, and there's been discussion on that, we've had conversations with Camo that I actually haven't been part of, so I can't, you know, tell you much about that, I don't know, I think Tim Moot over at CPL's been part of a bunch of conversations with our engineers who are not here tonight, because as we said, we're focused on the zoning text amendments, but that is a very fair question, and they're.
The property is in the sewer district.
I understand that, but if there's such a shortage, how's this gonna fit in with all this housing that they're proposing?
Well, it's a question, I mean, it's something we have to look at with the tribune.
Because I just worry, are you gonna donate monies to improve this system, to make this work? Because there's a lot of people in the community that have been complaining that they don't have sewer, and how are you gonna get it?
Completely understood.
You know, same goes with water, how are you gonna get it if the community can't get it? Because that's gonna come up.
I'm fully aware of that. First problem, first hurdle, the potentiality of even having a reuse of this project, right? The real, the pain point right now is BJ's is up there, and there's 100,000 square feet missing, and there are trees growing out of the asphalt, and if BJ's walk away, that's your biggest taxpayer in your town. It's also our biggest tenant, right, and leaves us vacant, so that's the pain point we're trying to address first. Your point is incredibly well-taken, and whether it's I and I, pump upgrades, whatever it's going to need to be, going downward, going to the south, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of ways to solve that.
People are gonna wanna know what, how's this gonna benefit them in the community?
I understand, and I know there are a few other.
But if we're gonna let them come back, they need to bring something to the table.
Correct, well, they, at this point, it's, at this point, they're looking just regarding the concept of the zoning changes, to see, and then that lets the applicant figure out whether or not, you know, this entire thing is a viable project to them also.
Okay.
So if they get the changes in the zoning, then they can move forward, and again, that would have to be something that needs to be addressed, you know, before they can get any type of site plan approval, they'd have to address the issues of water and sewer.
Well, that's also gonna be, the town board is, you know, conducting the SECA review, so that's an issue that's looked at as well.
But that's all separate right now.
Right.
I actually love the idea, just revitalize that place up there, because.
Yeah, the one, the only one concern I really have is just the, obviously, you're proposing a light industrial or possible warehouse use of the existing building. I'm just, you know, just curious, just to make sure that there's not an intention that down the road, somebody goes and decides to, you know, build a bunch of industrial buildings on the property, you know, so now you're traversing to go shopping, you're going by.
Amazon, Depo.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, you know, you're going by something that's not gonna be of a retail use, you know, I agree 100%, it's a great use for the back of those buildings, you know, you propose the front as a retail, you know, space that probably doesn't need all that much area to store things, those buildings are big, I mean, they have some good high ceilings in there, and it would be good for some manufacturing, but, you know, as accessory, revitalizing those buildings, I agree with it in terms of, you know, using that use as a new use, I don't think it's a good idea, especially with what you're proposing on the rest of the site.
I completely agree, and I think, you know, from a comfort standpoint, that's why, where Dakota comes in, because they're sitting here ready to do the multifamily, and as you said.
Correct.
With, especially, unfortunately.
I know, it keeps popping in and out, yeah.
But if you think about how you're gonna get to that, you're gonna come up the hill, you're gonna go to that central circle, and then you're gonna go over, right, is one of, there are a couple of pathways, but that's one of the pathways. So you're not, you're not, you're right, what you're gonna want to do is the back half of that building, you want to take advantage of it, because it's a lot of space, right? And otherwise, you're gonna, the challenge you'd have is if you otherwise leased it to somebody who might fit into the category and took half of that building, then you lose the opportunity to have a series of storefronts in the front, right? So that, I think that's what we're trying to activate, and it's a well-taken point.
I mean, one of the ways you could accomplish that is limit it, limit those uses as adaptive reuse.
That's, that's true too, because there's no, there's no.
And that way, you're limited to the existing buildings on site.
Right, I agree.
And it wouldn't be, you know, you wouldn't, now, I mean, I guess theoretically, you could also do it for BJ's, should, you know.
Right.
That would be my concern, is that down the line, they want to take down one of these lots and totally redevelop them, and then you want to put one of these uses in. Another way we could do it is look at. Another way we could do it is look at scale or percentage of, look at managing the size of any potential industrial use in the building.
I mean...
It's a good comment, David.
Yeah, it's just something to think about. I just, you know, I...
No, it's a great point.
Yeah.
It's a great point.
Because you end up down the road, as I said, you know, end up down the road, and if for some reason, things don't go well, and, you know, this, all of a sudden, there becomes a, you know, drastic need for manufacturing, you know, in this country, which we don't have. You know, this becomes a, you know, an easily marketable site. Hey, we want to put up, you know, three factories on the property, you know, next to this new residential development. And, you know, BJ's may not be there at that point. As I said, it's just something to think about. It's, it's kind of changing the thought process of what's here, only because it was within the zoning. But really, everybody's kind of looking to go, you know, the other route of making it more of a village center. I mean, I think that's, that's kind of a good approach.
And same would be true of, you know, warehouse from one end to the other.
Right.
If too much of the site became used in that way, that would not be conducive with the intent.
Yeah, to adapt, like I said, in the back, I mean, it was always the back of the building anyway, you know, if they're accessing it from there.
It's got a loading dock. It'd be great to use it that way.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay. It's a good, it's a good point.
Breweries or distilleries.
The which?
I said, he said breweries or distilleries, because they're in the back of the building as well.
Yeah, I believe so. That's what, I believe, yeah.
Diamond Hospital, he actually has buildings like that, where they do rent out half to breweries if, you know, their property management. So I think that's what they're more in line to do, instead of actually making something...
No, you're, that, it's a lot like, the hope would be something maybe like La Fectoria and Peak Skill, which where we, you know, we have the ropes course, we have Captain Lawrence Brewery, we have an eatery, we have, it's entertainment, you know, that also has a retail...
Those are, yeah, those are more the kind of, you know, they're a little of both, you know, because they do allow, you know, some type of public, whether or not they're, you know, serving their products there or whatever. But, you know, there's some, there's public interaction in those. And, you know, the ones I worry about is just the strict industrial, you know.
Well, it's good to be worried about the worst-case scenario, right? If we're creating, if we're defining the parameters, you should take it to an extreme and say what the worst-case scenario is. And mitigate it. Okay.
That's a great point. A great point. Appreciate it.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions regarding just the, I guess, with the zoning, what they're proposing and the zoning changes?
Good idea.
I mean, obviously, it'll be back to us, you know, as this unfolds after, you know, after the town board, after the town board reviews it, obviously, you know, at some point in time, once you guys start to put your plan into motion, it'll be back in front of us, and, you know, we'll go from there.
Excellent. Thank you again for your time.
Okay. So I guess, at this point, I guess we need to, I guess the town board's looking for comments from us. I mean, obviously, what we discussed tonight, I guess we can draft a letter.
As the key...
Have the secretary, yeah, if you could work with the secretary, draft a letter to present to the town board prior to...
Prior to their public hearing. We can also leave it open in case you have thoughts over the course of the next two days that you'd like to see included in that.
Okay.
But, yeah, I'll work with the secretary, we'll draft something.
All right.
Thanks again.
Probably a good motion. I mean, I don't, well, make a motion to have the planner and the secretary produce a letter to the town board.
So moved.
Second, regarding our comments this evening. Okay, motion's made. Second, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, you all.
Take that.
Good evening. Amy Bomberdery with Dan Stokosa for the Cooper Road Lot Line Realignment, Lots 1 and 3.
Okay.
Since I was last before you, I had submitted to the Health Department, and I did soil testing on Tuesday, and then Thursday and Friday. So the Health Department witnessed the test on Tuesday, the rain, so worst-case scenario. They came out okay, though. So the whole point again of this is because it was an improved lot, there's a well that was never picked up by the surveyor, either before or after this was approved back in the 80s. And that made the, the approved septic system location on Lot 1, it wasn't going to work. It wasn't going to meet separation to the public water supply on a different lot. So by doing the lot line realignment, I can move the septic system over to the east and provide the proper separation. And based on the soil tests on Tuesday, it's, it's going to be, I think it's going to work out. I'll just have to revise the plans for the Health Department and a couple of things for the engineering.
Yeah, I was just saying, you did receive the two letters, the most recent?
I did.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. I think we have, I think both the planner and I believe the engineer have discussed the common driveway.
Yep.
There is a requirement in our zoning code that says you're allowed to have the common driveway, but you must show that you're able to put in two separate driveways if, for some reason, it needed to be in the future. I think that needs to be added to the plan.
So...
Just conceptual, it's not that, you know, you're actually going to do that.
My initial submission showed two separate driveways.
Yeah, that's all you, just show another...
Put that in an inset, the original plan as an inset, and that would make, that would be compliant.
Okay.
So cut and paste it from the one to the new one.
That'll be easy.
She just have to show one plus the one she already has, the common? Because that could be just one, right? The common could be one separate driveway, she's just got to show another one for the other one.
Well, originally, she wasn't proposing a common driveway. Each lot had a separate driveway. So if she just shows that plan on this, she will be compliant with that section of the code.
Okay.
So...
So I think beyond that, the engineers, you had a couple of other...
Yeah, we just, we asked for you guys to beef up the road control, given the soaps. You did have a detail for curtain drain on the plans, but then what did you show?
We weren't sure.
So it's, it's there just in case?
Well, we're also getting Health Department approval for Lot 2 separately, so that, based on that approval and the soil test from that, that's this lot right here? That lot?
Okay.
That, that needed a curtain drain. So that's why we assume that there may be a need for a curtain drain at the lower lot, but...
Well, I guess I would just say, if you think you might have a curtain drain on one of the, one of these lots, just show potential discharge points, that we know where it's going.
Okay. Based on the soil test, I don't think I'm going to need it, but it may make sense just to have it because of the way the grades work.
Okay. All right.
So I guess I'm here asking for conditional final approval if possible.
Might be. All right, just see. All right, those are all the ones. Making sure. All right, I think we've covered the items we discussed earlier. What does the staff feel? Do you guys feel that they're far enough along for a conditional approval?
From my perspective, it's, it's very, very simple. So I have no issue. It's totally...
Yeah, these are, you know, items that...
Just minor, minor items. Okay. All right. Does the board feel?
Yeah, it's fine.
Good with it? Okay. Make a motion to authorize the planner to draft a resolution of approval?
So made. Second.
Okay, motion made. Second, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, you all.
Have a good night.
Okay. All right, our next item on the agenda this evening is site plan and special use permit for Carmax Auto Superstore.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name's Richard O'Rourke. I'm with the law firm Keenan Bean. I represent Carmax. Here tonight with us is Steve Hudak, who's in charge of real estate design and development for Carmax. We're not here for final approvals. So I'm not even going to ask you for that. Anyway, so Steve is right here. Also with us this evening is John Thatcher, who is with CenterPoint, development consultant and Carmax program manager, from Colorado. And then we have Karen Mayanowski, who is a professional engineer, bowler engineer, engineering, who's a project manager for this Carmax site. We're here this evening for, obviously, a site plan as well as a special permit application. This is the Plant Depot property. We've been fortunate enough to have had discussions with some of the consultants, as well as with the planning board chairman and the deputy chairman, vice chairman. And what we've done is, we've tried to listen and learn from the conversations we've had and the discussions, and we listened and incorporated what we think are a variety of changes to the plan as first shown, and which we think is, as best as we can, fits within the template that Carmax has for its over 200 locations throughout the United States. So I won't go into the detail of those, because John Thatcher will take you through that. And then Karen will also, from a technical point of view, take you through what we are now proposing as the special permit and site plan application. So, thank you. John?
I'm looking for PowerPoint. It appears it may not be installed on the machine. That's okay, we can speak off the boards. Karen, if you could maybe set up those up. Good evening. My name is John Thatcher. As Mr. O'Rourke mentioned, I'm a development consultant for Carmax. We had a short PowerPoint presentation prepared, but technical difficulties, we'll, we'll need to forego that. Luckily, we brought the analog version with us as well. And so just to tell you a little bit about Carmax as a company, I think many of you have heard this spiel before, so not to rehash it too much, but the nation's leading pre-owned auto retailer. They've got 230 stores across the country, selling 750,000 cars a year, not to mention all the great charity work they do and the recognition they get for being a great place to work. In short, they're a great company. They build a top-notch product, and they're very much looking forward to hopefully joining the community here in Wapungia. On the lower board there, you will see the existing conditions. We are discussing the site at the corner of Smithtown and Route 9, which is the existing Plant Depot and Tile Shop development that has been in place for some time. We believe this proposal for you tonight will be a major upgrade for this property. And on the upper board here, we have the current site plan. We've been in touch with the town here regarding this proposal for quite some time now. Our initial proposal to the town really looked more prototypical for a Carmax development. It's come a long way since then. We had a very large parking lot out front with no landscaping in the sales display area. We had the building set very far back from the road. And we've changed it to what you see here on the board today. So this revised site plan shows everything we've changed after the numerous discussions with the town. A few key points to highlight in this, in this current layout. We've moved the building closer to Route 9 and further away from the residential towards the rear of the property. And in doing so, we've reduced the amount of sales display spaces in front of the building, bringing that building closer to the road, reducing the number of sale spaces in front of the building, and shifting some of those sale spaces to the interior side yard. We've also rotated the building 90 degrees to orient the service bay doors away from the residential property and into a screened area where they will not be visible to the public. We've added median and End Camp Island landscaping within the sales display area, added trees and shrubbery to the landscape buffer along Route 9 and Smithtown Road. We've added evergreens along Osborne Hill Road to supplement the existing mature landscape trees along Osborne Hill Road. And we've added an additional truck loading zone as well. And finally, we are proposing to incorporate a 20-foot sewer easement for future public service connection, whenever that should be available. So if we can move that a little bit, so we can speak a little more freely to it. To give you a brief overview of the kind of layout and operation of the site, you can really think about it, you can break the site into three distinct areas. So we've got the public parking lot here, the area known as the sales display area, which is that area in front and wrapping around the side of the site, and then the staging area, which is this area here, the building centered in the middle. And so to talk you through each of those distinct, distinct areas, the public parking lot, just what it sounds like, like any retailer, that is where you would park as a customer, that's where the employees will park, that is, just like it sounds like their public parking lot. The sales display area is this area in front, wrapping around the side. That is where their inventory is displayed for sale. It's totally separated from the public parking lot. It's surrounded by a guardrail with gates, and Carmax considers it sort of their outdoor showroom, if you will. And then we have the staging area back here, which I mentioned before, that's really Carmax' back-of-house area where cars are stored and prepped for sale. Again, it's a security area surrounded by a six-foot tall solid, solid masonry wall for screening and security, access in and out via gates. And that area is not open to the public. That's, like I said, really kind of Carmax's back-of-house area. So that's generally how it's laid out, the building on site. I've got the sales component of the building, a service component of the building here, connected by what they call the presentation lane. And to walk you through the operations of the site from a customer perspective, if you are a potential customer looking to purchase a vehicle, you would come in off Smithtown Road. We have three access points on Smithtown Road. The furthest, furthest east is connected directly to the sales display area. That's access for test drives only. The other two are on Smithtown. Those are for access into the public parking lot. So if you're a customer, you come out of Smithtown Road, you park in the public parking lot there. In order to get out to the sales display area, to view the vehicles for sale, because that is a secured area separated from the public parking lot, you would actually need to go into the sales display area. You'd be greeted by a Carmax associate, and they would show you out to the sales lot through that doorway there. They would show you around or let you browse at your leisure, whenever you prefer. The cars in that area are, like I said, it's only for the display of vehicles for sale. More of an pedestrian area as far as customers are concerned. If you want to take a car for a test drive, you notify a Carmax employee. They would bring it to the spot, out to the gate, where you can switch places, go on your way with the test drive, and then when you bring it back, same thing, switch back, Carmax employee will bring it back to that spot. So all that to say, the public is not operating vehicles in that area. Only Carmax employees are operating vehicles in that area. If you go for that test drive and decide you want to buy that car, you go back into the sale, sale building there, finish up the paperwork. In the meantime, they would bring that car to the staging area, maybe run it through the car wash, give it one last detail. the car wash, give it one last detail, and then present it to you in this area known as the presentation lane, is the name, and you're on your way with your vehicle. If you're bringing your vehicle back for service or what have you, you would exchange vehicles in that presentation lane as well. It's kind of where the exchange of vehicles is made, whether outgoing or incoming. And that's really the customer experience side of things. The rest of the story happens in this staging area there. Like I said, that's where cars are stored and prepped for sale. It's surrounded by a six-foot-tall masonry wall for screening. And, you know, that's where you access the service component of the building. The bay doors open up facing south there into that screened area. There are four bays there. Only light retail-type service is proposed, oil changes, tire rotations, things of that nature. No major bodywork or mechanical painting work would be proposed here. And then, like I mentioned earlier, there is a car wash back there. Again, that's private use for Carmax's use, cleaning the inventory for sale. It's not anything that's open to the public. And in the public parking area, I did want to point out the loading zones. We initially had one. I think there was some concern about what happens if, although it's not planned, if two car carriers do show up on site at the same time. We don't want to have the potential to block Smithtown Road. So we did add another car carrier loading zone, so there are two designated on-site. And so that is the site plan. That's how it operates. You know, like I said, the plan has changed a lot since we first came before the town, and, you know, Carmax definitely wanted to emphasize, you know, that we are trying our best to find a balance and accommodate the town's needs and desires with Carmax's, and I think the plan before we have you tonight is a very good one. Do you have any of the renderings available? We might show a few of those. Okay, I'll mention that. That's fine, sure. And I did want to point out, with the car wash that is proposed, that is intended to be a, not intended to be, it will be, a 100% full recycle car wash, meaning that it does not discharge any of the waste. It is recycled to the point that it can be, and when it needs to be changed, a water truck will come haul that water off, replenish it, and so forth.
Totally contained, there will be no discharge on site?
Correct, correct. Okay. And here we can see the elevations for the proposed facility. And I did want to take a few moments to address some of the comments we had received as part of the town's initial review, if I may. There was a question about the access from Smithtown Road, specifically why two access points from Smithtown Road into the public parking lot. The response to that would be really just to provide some sense of separation between kind of the front of the lot and the more rear portion of the lot. The front of the lot being lots of customer activity, people coming in and out, praising cars, things of that nature, and the rear of the lot being more where the car carrier access would be with the loading zones there and employee parking. So just kind of providing a little sense of separation is the intention behind those two access drives. There was a comment about delivery trucks and emergency vehicles being able to navigate through the site. In response to that, yes, we have run truck turn templates through the site. The car carriers can make it and to the loading spaces and back out with no problems. And emergency vehicles as well, we've made sure to provide the appropriate clearances and turning radiuses for emergency vehicles to be able to access the site as needed.
Can you provide those to us?
Yes, we're happy to do that with our next resumé. There was a comment about public parking counts, specifically reading Carmax is proposing 77 public parking spaces, the minimum requirement being 51. Should consider reducing spaces or requesting a waiver from the planning board. In response to that, Carmax would like to respectfully request a waiver from that requirement. As I mentioned earlier, you know, they have 230-plus stores across country, meaning lots of data points as they model out their new stores, how many customers they think they can expect, and how many public parking spaces they think they need. And they have a good track record of really rightsizing their public parking lots. They don't want to overbuild and waste space and money either, but they have the data to support the fact that they do need that many parking spaces on site. So we would request a waiver to go over the minimum requirement.
To clarify that point, you should take a look at Section 24067, which is the special permit for motor vehicle sales establishments. It has a separate parking calculation than the one you're using.
Okay.
So at the very least, we'll need to update the bulk table as it corresponds to parking calculation.
Okay, we'll definitely take a look at that. The next comment I wanted to address was the sales display area dimensions, striping dimensions. So kind of reading Carmax is proposing to modify the dimensions of the parking geometry in the sales display, aka inventory area. Will need to request a waiver from the planning board. And yes, we will respectfully request a waiver from that requirement as well. I would like to point out that this would only be for the sales display area and not the public parking lot. Only the sales display area that I mentioned earlier. That is that secured area for the display of Carmax inventory only, and really more of a pedestrian area for customers to browse those vehicles. Also, as I mentioned earlier, we have ensured that despite the reduced dimensions for parking stalls, we will provide adequate access for emergency vehicles and clearances and turning radiuses and things of that nature through that area. The next comment was regarding lighting. Essentially, light levels should be reduced compared to what was shown on the photometric plan which was submitted. In response to that, you know, we believe we are meeting the current town code requirements regarding light levels, specifically light spill over the property lines. And when it comes to the areas most sensitive to light impacts, the residential properties to the rear, you know, we've done a lot of things with the site design and pushing things forward and leaving open space in the rear, which will really help with that, not to mention the existing mature row of evergreen trees along Osborne Hill Road, in addition to the supplemental landscaping to kind of fill in some of the gaps there. So, you know, we certainly want to be respectful of the neighbors, and I think a lot of the changes we've made to the site plan support that. And, you know, furthermore, the light levels shown on the lighting plan submitted, those are only during operating hours. I did want to point out that all of Carmax stores has an automated system in which the light levels are automatically reduced at closing. Their standard setup is to, at closing time, reduce the light levels essentially by one-third, and then as employees kind of finish closing up shop and actually leave for the night, one hour after closing, the light levels will reduce by another third. So essentially, in the overnight condition, you're left with light levels that are, you know, almost 70% less than the operating hour, operating hours light levels. So they're running at one-third of what they would have been during operating hours. So really, the light plan we had presented to you, that's only the operating hours lighting plan that, you know, would be a few hours a night, depending on the time of year, obviously. We would be very happy to provide an after-hours plan showing what those light levels would be reduced to after-hours. Regarding landscaping, landscaping along Osborne Hill Road and the southern property line should be enhanced. Carmax certainly wants to be a good neighbor. We recognize that there are residential properties nearby. I think I mentioned it before, but we are going to preserve the row of large evergreen trees along Osborne Hill Road, as well as supplement them with some additional evergreens to kind of fill in the gaps, if you will. Do we have printouts of the photos from Osborne Hill Road? I don't think we have them on boards, do we?
Well, they're looking at putting a lawn in in the back, right? I'm assuming, because that's all dirt back there now.
Yeah, mostly lawn. And maybe next time we come before you, we'll have some photographs of the existing landscaping along Osborne Hill Road. So, you know, I think, as I mentioned earlier, we've done a lot of things to kind of pull the development away from Osborne Hill Road. We're going to leave the existing there, supplement it. We will have the six-foot-tall masonry wall surrounding that staging area. So, you know, I think we've made a lot of positive changes in that direction. Oh, there you go. Understanding, obviously, the intent to minimize the impact on the residential neighbors. All that said, we are, Carmax and the whole team is dedicated to being a good neighbor, and so, you know, we welcome any additional thoughts or specific comments you may have regarding how to further buffer us from residential properties. I think those are the key topics I wanted to hit tonight. The team and I are here and happy to answer any questions you may have, and we very much thank you for your consideration.
I'm sorry, did you say what the foot candles were going to be during the day?
During operating hours?
During operating hours?
Maximum, basically, yeah.
Yeah. I have the lighting plan here.
And Max is, I think, 38?
38 in the sales display area, yes.
Is that building block?
The building?
The building?
Yes.
It's like a deck or block or what?
Yes, so CMU block, both smooth face and split face.
And what about the wall, no, the security wall you were saying, would that match that?
Correct, yeah, same material.
Okay. And it would be that brown, basically?
Correct.
And screening on the backside, but I know what it looks like back there, because you can see through pretty good. You know, those trees, you know, they're older, but maybe more screen there so that, you know, everybody that lives on Osborne there isn't looking at that block wall.
Absolutely. While they are mature, large trees, we recognize that the foliage is pretty elevated, and so our goal is to kind of fill in
Exactly.
That lower 10 feet below the main canopy.
If I may, just to expand on one of the things that John said in terms of the secured area that's in front, that's accessed only by Carmax employees, and they actually take the car out, but that's a secured area. I note that in your code, you have a Section 240-96B2, which provides for a reduction in the size of the parking stalls. That's something that we're looking for. And the reason for it is that you have it in the code, and the code states it's intended for low turnover. So in those circumstances, you can have a reduced parking stall size, and that's precisely what happens with this particular area. It's not for employee parking, it's not for customer parking, it's solely for a display area. So that's picking up on that.
Yeah, and we've granted waivers before for that. It's more for the inventory-type parking, correct.
Precisely, thank you.
Yeah, that's what you're looking for. It's the other parking, which I think you're going to have to really work on to kind of, I guess, to convince the board for the customer parking, because I think the numbers that we were given earlier, your 51 that you have on the plan really equates to 30 as per the zoning code. So for 77, you're asking for more than double the amount of parking in addition for us to waive. So I think in order for us to do so, I think there would have to be a very good justification for it.
That, and we recognize that. And the reason for that number is because of the other 200 stores that they have and their analysis of what happens in terms of parking for customers. And so the issue becomes, if we don't provide for that parking, where are these people going to park? And we don't want them on Smithtown Road or Osborne or on Route 9. So that's an issue that we have. But we can provide that documentation to show you.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, we're certainly happy to share some of the data I mentioned earlier from the existing Carmax facilities and the size of those lots and the utilization of the parking there to help justify that request.
Okay. What's the other? Just the, you know, back to the lighting. I mean, you had made mention about the lighting, but, you know, our lighting code really just addresses the, you know, more, you know, looking at the older lighting. So I think, you know, with the newer LED technologies and things like that, you're going to have to kind of maybe tweak what you have.
There's also a code, I mean, you mentioned compliance with the code. There's a lighting code that's being entertained by the town board at the moment. They're looking to pass it this month likely. And I'd be happy to share those specifics with you if you'd like to comply with what the lighting code will be at the time of your approvals.
Yeah, we would like to, absolutely like to see the current version of that. Thank you.
The only other things that I would mention, there are some of the points in my letter are echoing the points made in the Dutchess County planning letter. I don't know that you've seen it.
Yes.
One item that was not voiced in mind, but I know was something brought up at Dutchess County and something that the planning board was interested in discussing, were the site elevations, particularly the roof over the entranceways, which I think the county identifies. Before we move on, I think that it'd be useful to discuss that.
Yeah, you did receive the letter from Dutchess County Planning?
We did, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, because the roof design, I mean, without, I mean, we haven't, you know, we haven't really looked at the architectural issues at this point, but I know the county had picked up on the roof design. It's kind of a, almost kind of like you just took something and kind of stood it up in front of the building and say, hey, you know, here's the entrance, you know? But it only, you know, it was from the plane of the building going out and not tying it to the building. It's like something that was like an afterthought. And I believe this, I do remember some earlier plans that you had conceptually submitted with some different architectural styles, or at least, you know, maybe having that roof blend into another roof that would come down, you know, again, kind of give it, give it a look like it all belongs, let's put it that way.
Yeah, we are happy to speak with architects and, you know, see what sort of enhancements might be able to be made to a prototypical design that might be to the town's liking. I think it would also be helpful to perhaps bring in some images, some photos from existing facilities that match this design. I think a little is lost in the straight-on elevation like this. It really, when you see it in person, especially the newer prototype design, which is what's shown here, I feel like it does feel a little more cohesive in person. So I think with our, the next time we're before you, we'll try to bring some examples of existing facilities, real, actual photographs of this built-out, so you can get a better sense of how that looks.
How about some photographs of some other designs that you do also, so we can pick too?
Right. And this is really the existing standard prototype for Carmax, so they would all be variations of this design.
I think you have some other, you know, ones we kind of go over there real quick that
Almost like a reverse
And throughout Carmax's history, they have had a number of different types of prototypes designed.
I don't know.
Doesn't say.
Click on it, see what it says.
That's what I'm calling it. Other things like that.
It's almost like a reverse
But if you, you kind of get the idea, what we're, you know, architecturally making it look like it's part of the building, at least. You know, you guys have, again, you have 200 locations. I couldn't imagine us being the first, you know, planning board that's like asked for something that's, you know, kind of like fits, kind of like fits into the community, let's say. Okay?
Yeah, we'll take a look at that.
Do what?
No, I think the request is to bring it back into the building and then wrap that roof around the building, so that it doesn't just stand.
Make it kind of blend in. I get the need for the, you know, to identify where the entrance is. I get the need for that, and that's not, you know, that's, that's fine. It's just the way it's being presented, just the look of it we were discussing earlier. It's kind of, and, you know, Duchess County Planning also kind of felt it doesn't kind of go with the building itself. It just, it's out of the ordinary, I'll leave it at that.
I would add, take a look at section 240-29 for the resubmission. That's the section of the code that talks about signage. It would be useful to have some, I guess, close-up dimensions of those signs to demonstrate their conformity with this. You can get waivers from the sign code, but one of the thing would be, you know, for this, for example, I think it's the northeast elevation, you've got three signs along that building frontage, and the code would ask you to stick to one. Things like that. So, I mean, the dimensions are one thing. What?
Northwest elevation.
It's the northwest elevation? Okay. You're at a corner lot, you get a sign on both frontages, but you would not get multiple signs on one frontage.
Yeah, we are happy to submit a complete sign package showing the specifics of the signs proposed and then from there discuss any possible rate of requests.
We don't have that yet, but, yeah, take a look at section 240-29, and we'll take a look at that in the resubmission.
It's Houston, Texas, by the way.
Kind of, I mean, it's in the right direction.
I think it would, I think, what we picked up on was that it maintained the corporate identity, but would accommodate the county comment, right? Would respond meaningfully to the county comment.
And you mentioned the lighting code, which may be adopted in the near future. Do you know approximately what sort of light levels?
They're in the comment memo.
Okay, those are the, the light levels listed in that comment memo?
I can give you the language of the code, but that's color temperature, three thousand, hot spots not to exceed five, averages of one where possible. Provide the bug rating, dark sky compliant, the shebang. Oh, one of the other things that I picked up on was the pole height, which you're proposing at thirty would be capped at fifteen feet.
And so, based on the comments, the specifics in that comment, yeah, I think there are numerous things in there that Carmax would like to address. I don't know how deep we want to get into it tonight specifically. But if those light levels are intended to be for public parking lots, we feel, you know, that's, you know, that is one thing. We would ask that the sales display area not necessarily be held to the same standard as a public parking lot. It's not simply about being able to find your car back. You're actually conducting a task, you know, purchasing a vehicle. You need appropriate task lighting to see what you're doing, to assess the condition of the cars, scratches, you know, dings, things like that, the actual color of the vehicle. You know, in the winter, sun goes down fairly early, there's some time there where if you're going to look at cars after work, you're going to be shopping for cars with the lights on. And at some of the light levels discussed in that comment, we feel those would be insufficient to do those things I talked about. I think we were talking about it internally, and I think the analogy was made, you know, at one foot candle, that's essentially, imagine you're in Target shopping for clothes, and the power goes out, and the backup generator turns on, and you've just got emergency lighting. Are you going to feel comfortable picking out your outfit in that lighting? Kind of the same concept with buying a car, just on a little higher stakes, I guess. But you want to know, you want to be able to know and really assess the vehicle that you're considering purchasing, and so...
Can I ask, this is a county thing, our code is based on the county?
No, our code was drafted, and the county agreed with it.
We got recommendations from the county, right, on this?
It just corresponds with recommendations.
Because we're making this a standard on the lighting for everybody else, and we can't change it now, because then we got to go back and allow everybody to do what they want to do.
So, the lighting code has been drafted, and the, not to comply with county recommendations, but county recommendations do support the lighting code as it has been drafted.
These are the same lighting levels we're holding the other dealerships on that same road too, right now, right?
So, we can't bear from that, because we've already made other people do it.
Yeah, I mean, these are the, these are the things that we were looking at at Subaru earlier today, yeah.
So, the existing dealers, or any new dealers?
An application that was in earlier today of an auto body shop, where they were, you know, talking about bringing the max of six down to five.
Yeah, and I imagine they would have similar concerns to us. I guess I don't know what specific discussions were had.
The biggest difference would be that they have interior space, and all of your show space is outside on a very public corner of the town.
Right, and...
And he does have residential across the street that would be picking up that light. So, you got to take them into consideration too.
Yeah, absolutely. And one thing I want to point out, maybe a difference between us and Subaru is the sales display area is its own separate area, it's not intermingled, we don't have an indoor showroom, really. So, the light levels, where I was talking about it being, you know, beyond the safety standard, and that's certainly a consideration, but for levels sufficient for, you know, making a real, proper assessment of the condition of a vehicle, that would be mostly isolated to that sales display area, which is towards the front of the site and wrapping around the side slightly, but far removed from the residential properties, more towards the front of the site. The rear of the site, you know, obviously, we have to have certain minimum light levels, but those could be a little lower, and that's the area that's actually closer to the residential, in addition to the yard and the landscape buffer and the wall and everything we were mentioning earlier.
I still think we have to stick to what we've been doing. I don't think we should just let one person do it, then we have to go back and let everybody do what they want as well.
I think it's one of the things, I guess, we'll be talking about in the future, I guess, too. So, I think we need to reevaluate what the actual needs are going to be. It sounds like we have a couple of people that are, you know, adamant about, you know, the fact that we're holding other people to the same standards. It makes it difficult for us to, you know, to pick and choose and say, it's okay to put in, you know, excessive lighting, you know, for this project, when the others, you know, aren't requiring it, or be required to be held, you know, to the standard. So, I think you need to go back and look at it. The forty is a high number. I mean, I'll tell you right now, we've been around and around, and I know the recommendation is, you know, it's five or less. You know, we've allowed some gas station pumps to be as high as nine, you know, maybe up to ten in the past. It's kind of tough, I mean, you know, to, everybody's trying to stay within the same standards at this point. You know, the LED lights have changed the outlook on a lot of things because of, you know, the color temperatures and everything else. You know, LEDs react a lot differently than the old metal halide and, you know, mercury vapor bulbs. So, you know, the light transmits differently. You know, I get that, it's just, you know, the LED, as much as, you know, you just want to put those large numbers up there, it's just making it tough for us. You know, because we've seen what the effects are. I mean, we've seen sites that are, you know, that are at forty, and when you're, you know, down the street looking at it, it's like you're looking at the sun.
And we certainly don't want that, and we're happy to work with the town on finding something reasonable. I guess, the African is very concerned about the prospect of having, you know, an average of one. I think, I think, that gets into the, that's beyond assessing the condition of a car. That almost gets to the aspect of safety, and will their security cameras be able to pick up motion and faces? And will
They'll be able to pick it up.
pedestrians be able to navigate the lot safely?
You don't live there, so you're not going to see it. These are our neighbors, so we have to protect them.
Oh, I certainly understand that aspect of it, and we want to shield and make sure that we're not spilling over the property line. No argument there, absolutely not.
All right, so I think you have a little bit of, on your end, I think you have a little bit of work on the lighting issue. Other than that, the planners, stuff, I think you've gone through everything. Did you have any concerns with the engineer's letter? I think there was a lot of, they had quite a few comments on here as well.
Good evening, Karen Maginowski from Bowler Engineering. We've had a chance to review the engineer's letter as well. There's nothing at this point that stands out to us. We thank you again this evening for gathering that initial feedback on the layout. We've taken the design aways, and we just wanted to gather this feedback from the board and be able to advance the plans further to address the engineering comments that are there.
Just one last thing, I know there was a comment raised in terms of the septic design for the property. And as you probably saw from the application, what we're, we have, I'll let Karen explain it, but the Duchess County's come out, and we can accommodate the septic flows as projected.
So, from a septic standpoint for the site, we're about in the seven to eight hundred gallon-per-day range, so well below a thousand gallons that's there, which is another reason that this site, this redevelopment is great for this site. We did meet Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health on the property to witness deep tests. They were satisfied with those. We also performed percolation testing to determine the area for the septic system. That was all done in this area, back here within the green space, so that we can meet separation to well, stormwater, and everything else that's around us as well from a health concern.
Where's the current septic?
The current septic, yes, is up front.
And it's up there, all right.
In green space there. So, we've got it relocated back here, and as I mentioned, that's where the testing was done, that the health department witnessed. And they have cleared us to submit full design plans, which we intend to do after this meeting.
And this is going to be a raised bed system?
That's correct.
I think that's what was proposed on the...
Yeah, the soils, the soils tests were good, the perk test was good. In order to meet separation to groundwater, it will be a raised system.
Okay, how high of a raised system would it be?
About three feet.
About three feet?
Yeah.
Okay. Because just to the north of that, I also see on there is a tank, I forgot to ask that question earlier. So, there's a proposed water tank on site, and what's the purpose for that?
So, the water storage tank?
Yes.
Yes, that's this, in this area that's here. So, to speak to Water Service, we are proposing to reuse the testing well on site, which is here. And we've reviewed that with the health department initially as well, just from a conceptual standpoint of reusing it, and they are okay with that. So, our Water Service would come from the well to the building. Since we do not have municipal water, this storage tank would provide the extra volume needed for fire protection.
Okay, so it's basically for fire protection?
Yes.
That well's not going to replenish that tank, though, is it?
It is not, I don't believe so. We're going to do full testing on that yield and everything, though, to determine that.
Is there floor drains in the bays you got there? The bays you were proposing, you had some light mechanical work to be done there, oil changes and et cetera. Is that, is there floor drains in those bays, or?
I can confirm that.
And if so, are they going to an oil-water separator?
Yes. Yes, and that is on the plan, the oil-water separator is right here.
Oh, it is, okay, cool, okay.
How tall is that tank?
It still has to be sized, it might be around the twenty-foot range, but the sizing of that hasn't been done yet.
You're going to put some screening around that, because that's going to be written in?
Yep, we did propose trees all around it, but as part of the additional screening back here, we can look at views of the tank as well.
What color is the tank going to be?
To be determined. A nice neutral color, if that's what you prefer.
Wouldn't it be easier just to run water down to the site?
What was that?
Wouldn't it be easier just to run water down to the site, and you don't have to deal with a tank and a fire pump?
Since it's not available, and it's not available nearby for this use for the low amount of water that they need, between the well and the tank, it satisfies the need for water here.
Anybody else have any questions?
How far away are the mains from there?
How far away do the mains from there?
I believe it's, I believe at Adams.
Adams, right.
At Fellerhouse Road. It's currently where the lines go to.
It's not actually that far from that, probably.
No, it's not. Have you approached the town, possibly, of some partnership to do something to extend them?
We, as far as what we are, with our very limited use in terms of water and septic, you know, obviously, we will participate in a very equitable way in terms of any proposed, and we'll collaborate with the town. And we're obviously setting aside property on our property specifically for whatever infrastructure approvals would come for the region and the area. But our use is so de minimis, in contrast to your other uses up and down the corridor. You know, as far as what we can do, as I said, we'll cooperate, special districts, formations, whatever you need in that regard, but on an equitable basis. We can't, we can't spend three million dollars, four million dollars running a line to try municipal, it just...
No, 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 I can understand, yeah, I can understand that, there's a huge, you know, a huge cost of infrastructure.
I think I met, it might have been nine months ago, I think with Mr. Haran and... And we talked, we talked about a bunch of things. The wastewater treatment plant needs to be upgraded, it's got INI issues. There's not right away to get water or sewer the entire way. If you extended water now, you're going to be building it where the sewer needs to go. So, we get, in the future, you're going to have a parallel line, you're going to, you know, and we couldn't get to a point where there'd be any timeframe where we know we can get this accomplished. And if there is some sort of investment, whether it's us or some bank, you know, knowing you can get, your investment returned to you, or you're going to go through some sort of special district that, you know, sets up the financing from other properties or the access, all those things are undetermined, and there's no way to evaluate when it can be done. You know, so we had a very lengthy conversation, and I think there's just so much risk involved with what needs to be done. I couldn't see how you get there. If I misrepresented that, please step in.
No, I mean, there's, you know, there's a lot of moving ports with respect to creating a special district, you know... to creating a special district, you know, as far as, you know, the other properties along the line. So, I mean, it's, it's, you know, you're not going to extend a water line to serve that length of time past those properties in one piece, so.
Yeah, it's just, it's, yeah, it's one of those questions we have to ask.
Yeah, no.
You know, it's, yeah. And you know what? We understand that, and that's why we're, we're trying to be proactive by saying, look, we'll set aside, we'll set aside property for the ultimate use. You don't have to condemn it, you know, we're going to give it to you. The problem, I've, I've been involved in special district and as a former town attorney, the issue is eminent domain, taking a property. A lot of people don't want to cooperate, some do, some don't, and they have a timeline here. They want to, in our lifetime, get, get through with that. And I'm not suggesting it would take a long time, but nevertheless, I've, I've been through this. And, and with their very limited water use and their very limited septic use and recycling one hundred percent of the water for the car wash, you know, again, on an equitable basis, we'll cooperate, whatever you want to do, but we can't, we want to go forward, so. Okay, all right.
Just one, one question regarding the operation. As far as, so do you purchase vehicles at this location as well? And so the vehicles that are purchased here, are they, you know, detailed and everything here, or how does that work?
So we've got two, two different types of facilities. One we call a reconditioning facility, and the other one is a sales-only. This would be a sales-only facility, so any trade-ins that we would buy, they would have to be loaded on a truck, sent to a reconditioning facility, and then whether those cars are brought back or some other vehicles brought back, that's the way the process works.
Anybody else have any questions?
Anyone have anything else?
Okay, staff have any questions? The applicant have any other questions you want to discuss this evening? Okay, we just, just want to move forward. So we'll be responding to the comments, make a resubmission, take a look at the lighting as well. And I, I understand you already circulated for notice of intention to declare lead agency?
No, that's, that we're going to vote on that next.
Oh.
That was, I didn't get, I didn't get that far, we have to, we have to do that, too.
Okay, all right.
But anyway, so with that said, entertain a motion to have the secretary circulate for us to be lead agency for this project.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Thank you very much.
So with respect to that, the engineer had a couple of notes regarding the FEAF. If you could make those changes, we can-
Make those changes, yeah, we have to recede.
Yeah, pretty minor. Yeah.
And speaking to everyone in terms of how, procedurally, do you want, do you want flash drives, do you want, you know, for simulation, or do you want hard copies? I can talk to-
Be.
Have any, or we- Thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Have a good evening. All right, our next item on the agenda this evening is Myers Run LLC subdivision.
Good evening, Michael Lund, I'm the applicant developer. It's just me here tonight, too, it's my engineer's not here. Well, last time we were here was March seventh. Planting Board gave us approval to fell the trees. We posted the bond, we did that prior to the March thirty-first deadline, and I'm here tonight to ask the planting board if they would be willing to let us remove the fell trees off the site, no stumping, nothing like that, just remove the, you know, the trees that are lying there now.
Okay, so, I mean, I guess that, that was a process that had already started, I guess, correct?
Uh, no, that's, we haven't removed anything.
You didn't move anything?
Nothing.
Okay. All right, so, I mean, what are we, were you talking about?
Just the fell pitches.
Obviously taking whatever stood taken down, you want to chip the brush?
Yeah, and we've had neighbors call and ask when, you know, our backyard looks like, when are you moving? I'm like, we're, we're going to be presenting and asking the planning board, so.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's, all right, so where do we stand is, it's kind of tough, because where do you stand with the, we already gave the preliminary approval?
Correct, yes. Right now, I know Berger's office is communicating with Dan, who are at the health department, so that's really what we're doing now in the DPW. So I figured once we have the trees off, we would do nothing else further on site until we're, you know, final approved.
So the question comes in is now with moving all the stuff around and disturbance, how are you going to protect the site? Are you going to move forward with some type of, you know, for your SWIP, are you going to go ahead and submit for an NOI?
Well, what we were discussing with Joe said to me was, I mean, have minimal disturbance, just removing everything off, the track pad is in, anything, wood chips or any chips that are there, we would use just to stabilize anything from the rubber tires, but there's no, and we're not stumping or anything there now.
Okay, so your plan, so the plan would be is use the wood chips to stabilize any exposed land?
Anything that's there, but we're really just hauling off more or less, just everything that's just fell and laying there down, just to remove off-site more or less.
Right.
You're not going to chip the tops of the trees, you're going to take them off, too?
They might chip the branches, and that's why I think we could use the chippings just to, you know, it's all rubber tire machine.
You're going to need some kind of water protection to keep that from falling down through these ranges?
Yeah, and any silt fence, and we could-
You're going to need a silt fence, a paint mail or something on that.
When we put the track pad in, there's a stockpile right near the entrance road where I put some silt fence around now just to stabilize, so anything we have to do, we would do.
You don't want those chips on the hill, they got to be someplace where they're added in the way-
Of course.
So they're not running into the road.
And we've told all the neighbors that, people have called and asked.
I mean, this, um, yeah. I mean, without having anything in place, I mean, you know, without having the SWIP in place and having protections in place, that's what we're kind of worried about is what's going to happen if, you know, you do have the disturbance on the property. If you don't have your erosion control measures in place other than the tracking pad, you know, we don't have any guarantees that you're going to go ahead and spread chips across whatever it is. We don't have anybody that's, you know, we don't have our stormwater consultant, you know, I don't know if there's an escrow for him in place yet to have him go and assess the site, you know, to make sure that what's going on, whether or not we need to have an escrow, or, you know, an additional bond in place for, you know, the in case we, you know, the town has to step in to do something, whether or not we would need to do it. You kind of like come and ask it and everything without a plan in place.
So when I met with the town last, it was after we felled the trees, and I did mention that according to Barbara B's office, if we had to post some escrow for after the trees were removed, if an inspection or anything had to happen, just to make sure, you know, the town was satisfied with the condition of the site. And we'd be open, be open to do that. And for us, it's really a safety thing, because there's kids playing up there, climbing on the trees and running around, and neighbors calling, so.
Is, there was another thing, too, has the wetland buffer been delineated?
Yes, it has.
It has?
And it was there prior to, we had that done prior to even the tree felling as well.
Okay.
If they were to do something like that, would they be better off just chipping into the back of the trucks and getting it out of there? That way it doesn't-
Yeah, it doesn't make any, yeah, it doesn't make any difference, it's just whatever coming down the hill.
Yeah, you just don't want it to wash away or-
Yeah, you don't want anything washing out into the roadway, that's more or less what the concern is.
I would try to haul them off anyway, they're a pain to even leave on site. I mean, we'll have minimal amount just to stabilize, but I-
What did you delineate the wetland with, just out of curiosity? Is this the final form of the boulders, or is this just flags?
Just flags, it was just flags at this point. And I figured as we get into, and when we're approved and working, then we'll do everything we need to do.
There's no silt fence up right now.
Currently, there's, currently, there's not, no. There's just some in the front where we put that, you know, track pad. But John, I can coordinate with Joe's office if you wanted something on the, you know, right on Myers Corners, whatever we had to do, we, you know, we would do.
I mean, the Myers Corner side, you know, I think that's a, you know, something I think at least should be in place, and we kind of discussed a little earlier about, you know, maybe not all, but some temporary, yeah, at least some portion of it to be in place.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, definitely, I personally think it would make sense to have the wetland protected and, you know, whatever it takes to assure that nothing's going to run out to the road. And that, you know, I'm sure that's something that their engineer can put together real quickly on a plan to, for us to take a look at, it's just-
And once we get the, the fell trees out of there, it's easy for us to put the silt fence up, it doesn't get damaged, it's, you know, right now, everything's just laying all over the place, so.
Right, and that was the intention, was so that you didn't have to wait until November.
Yep.
So if you end up getting all your approvals in place and come June, you know, we're enabled to sign off on the final subdivision plot, you know, you're not sitting here waiting until, you know, November to go ahead and start work.
Thank you.
So, I mean, we've done that for you. I mean, that was the, you know, the whole purpose of, you know, the town actually enacting that and putting something on the books.
Thank you.
You know, now to clear the lot, you know, and everything else, is where you're asking for something that normally is not done until you have full approval.
Is the board open to?
And it's, it's opening new territory, because we really haven't gone here before.
Okay.
That's, I think, what the concern is. I mean, I don't think that there's an issue doing it, it's just a matter of what protection should be in place.
Well, if we coordinate with John's office to make sure any stormwater practices are met, and if I was to speak to the town or Barbara to see if there was an escrow that they would want just to do an inspection, possibly when we're done just hauling them off, I mean, that would be the extent of the work, would be just to remove the fell trees, you know, no stumping or-
So, I mean, I would, I wouldn't have a problem with, you know, as long as, you know, as long as the town engineer, you have your engineer put a plan together.
Sure.
So I, I think what might be appropriate, based on what John had said, was, in essence, do an initial phase for the SWIP for this level of clearing. So just, in essence, put a pre-step in at the very beginning of the process. You know, put in some protection for the stormwater buffer, so that, you know, there's no disturbance to the buffer. And then whatever, you know, around, you know, on, on the area where you're, you're going to have, you know, some, some dragging, and then, you know, coverage, you know, there's in the stormwater requirements, if, you know, you're not going to be disturbing the site for a period of time, you're going to have to cover it. I don't know if the, you know, I don't, I'm not sure if the wood chips are sufficient or you need something else, but, you know, typically there's hay or something like that-
Yeah.
-that they use as a cover, you know, while there's no activity going on. So, and, you know, that way, if you put this in up front, and, and you'll get the whole stormwater plan out of the way, which is a requirement for final anyway, and I guess, you know, there's some steps, you know, it's been reviewed to, to some extent, but, you know, if you just put in, in essence, a, you know, phase one or phase mi, phase zero-
Right. Yeah, phasing stormwater plan more or less, but-
You know, and once you get the NOI, you know, there is a requirement for inspections and, you know, for, for Walter to go out, so, you know, and if, if they're, you know, not doing work on the site, you know, the permit allows you to reduce the level of inspections if they're not actually doing any work on site, so. But I think, you know, getting the stormwater plan approved and getting an NOI, one, it moves the process along and, you know, I think it protects the town and the neighbors with the, you know, the inspection, so I think that makes the most sense.
So we should have the, so basically, we should just get the NOI, you know, get the SWIP in place.
Okay. If, if Berger wanted to put together something for John's office to look at in the meantime, just to kind of, I don't want to use the word phase plan, but something to, just to get the fell trees just removed off the site, as long as we stabilize any disturbers or the hay.
Sounds like, yeah, it sounds like we're looking to, you know, kind of put the NOI, you know, get that in place. So get your plan going, you know, the full- The full plan, I mean, it may not be, not the full, not the, the full plan, but putting it in, you know, if, if the engineer wants to put together a phased plan for it, we're fine, but it would just get the process started.
Is that what you'd be looking for, John?
That's, it sounds like that would be the easiest way to appease everybody and, you know, and Joe, Joe was, you know, the, the last version of the SWIP that he submitted was, we had very few comments to address.
He told me, okay.
So there should be no reason why they can't-
Put it in place.
-finalize that.
Okay.
Incorporate some kind of pre-phase, whatever you want to call it, and, and just show how the erosion control would be installed for that portion.
Got it.
And then done with it.
Okay. And then, then it would be whatever Barbara Verdi has for ensuring that escrows are in place for the, for, you know, checking on the, on the plan for inspections for the stormwater consultant.
Okay.
Okay. But the first step would be is filing for the NOI.
So I'll talk to Joe on the SWIP.
So at this point, you guys want to allow him to go ahead and remove it as long as he does the files for the NOI for the stormwater plan and provides adequate escrow as described, prescribed by the director of municipal development.
This doesn't mean he goes in tomorrow and pulls the trees out.
No, 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 not tomorrow, he's got to do these things first.
Okay.
And then, and then he'll be able to do it after, after that.
Maybe Monday?
Huh? That'd be good with that, too. Yeah, so we're not talking about, we're doing step one, you know, doing this, this stuff first, they're just going to get that done, but after they have it done and it's done as per the satisfaction of the engineer and town staff, then they, then they will be given the approval without having to come back and-
Yeah, I'd make sure John's office is happy and Barbara's happy with whatever escrow we need.
Okay.
Okay.
Is everybody, everybody kind of in agreement?
How are you going to get in here and remove those trees? What equipment are you using?
Probably this, they have like a rubber tire skidder, so it'll, you know, they'll tie a chain to the hitches and then they'll chip or they'll get them in the, in the trailer, and that's why the track pad is there, so they can back off, load the trailer.
Not during the rain, right?
No, we're good.
Good?
Good?
Yep.
All right, so we make a motion to allow them to move the, remove the trees after the, um, the NOI and the escrow is in place.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
All right, thank you, everyone. Bye.
Okay. Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is for site plan and special use permit for Jiffy Lube Multi-Care.
Good evening.
Evening.
You're here again for the proposed Jiffy Lube.
Name, name for the record?
Oh, sorry, name is Brady Curligi with Seven Multi-State Solutions.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay. So obviously, you've received the most recent letter from the engineer and planner?
Yes.
Seems like, seems like the list has narrowed down a little bit. Let's go ahead and we'll, let's start with the, I mean, let's go through the, the planner's letter first. Might be a little easier, I think there was a few more issues there and anything.
So I guess the, the first question that I had was, in, in one of the narratives submitted, you mentioned that the application had received all of the requested variances. When I spoke to the zoning administrator, who's, who's not here this evening, she mentioned that, that you had only applied for one variance for your front yard setback, and that the other items had not yet been requested or granted. I was, I was curious where you are in terms of your, your variance process.
So with the variances, we had to make some determin- So with the variances, we had to make some determinations with how we wanted to present, specifically signage variances. And so the intent is, now that we have a signage variance package, to be able to present that and see if it's amenable to request those variances.
Okay, so the signed variance, the, the front yard setback has been granted.
Correct.
The signed variances have yet to be requested.
Correct.
You mentioned on your plans, uh, a variance for overhead doors facing the road. We took another look at that, um, it only applies to automobile dealerships, not to this particular use. So, um, you can remove that from the, the front of the plans, as far as which variances are being requested or granted, or, or wherever, but that is not a require, that is not a variance that will be required. A few comments on lighting, um, it looks like there are hotspots, um, higher than five-foot candles, I'd recommend that you reduce those. The, the cut sheets that you provided don't actually specify which color temperature you're proposing. It's like, it'll be like the model, and then it'll show all of the different various forms that that model can come in, but it doesn't actually specify which color temperature you're choosing. And then in your schedule of lights, there was something labeled S1 and S2. I'm under the impression that those are existing lights outside of your pad footprint, that those are sort of adjacent in the parking lot. I just wanted to confirm with those, cause they, they deviate pretty wildly from the lights that you're proposing. And that would make sense, I just wanted to make sure, cause they're not labeled. And then, um, number three was parking. This is an interesting one, I would love a, a, a circulation plan, uh, and it would be useful to have, you know, you could, you can do that for the largest potential, and that would be like a fire truck or something, but in particular, the plan seems to assume that there's gonna be at least four cars queued up behind the building, waiting to pull in. You should show boxes of an average dimension of those cars queued up behind the building, and then, you know, that way we can evaluate how that circulation plan is gonna operate, assuming full business with these cars queued up. And then there's some questions about the, um, the, the, the schedule of parking regulations. Your use is, is not specified very specifically in that schedule. The way you have it listed out on the plans is that you're required by seventeen spaces, you're showing that you have nineteen spaces, but eight of those are like, the, the four cars inside the building and the four cars behind the building. Uh, we're gonna ask that you don't consider those as parking spaces, because we don't consider those as parking spaces. That being said, I think that we would be amenable to a, a conversation about a reduced parking count, because the, the planning board has a lot of latitude regarding the amount of parking they can recommend for a use that is not specifically identified in the parking regulations. So you've, you've made a fairly strong case that you would not require, um, you know, all seventeen of these spaces. That may be, may very well be true, but if you can put together a, a, I mean, it could, it could be a portion of the narrative, it could be a separate parking narrative, something that we can put in front of our, our traffic engineer, um, to weigh in on your usage, the number of employees you have, the number of, you know, a, a narrative justifying why, you know, you would not necessarily need eleven spaces, because we have, you know, X number of employees, and we are not expecting customers.
It's a drive-through service, not a drop-off service.
Exactly, we're not, we're not anticipating customers who would park.
Right.
Necessarily, I think that that would be something the board would be willing to consider, but we, we do wanna clean up the bulk table as it regards, you know, parking calculations.
And with that, is there a model use, or some other section of code that we can reference to say, you know, this is another use that might be applicable in this type of circumstance?
I can't think of one off the top of my head, I was made aware of a, a similar business down the road that I'd like to pull the site plan for and see how it was treated in the past.
Okay.
I don't know that we have, you know, we have auto body shops, but not this style, not this drive-through style of auto body shops. I don't know that we have parking regulations that specify, like a drive-through restaurant as opposed to a normal restaurant, or.
Well, I, I guess, I mean, that's one of my concerns regarding, um, queuing. You know, if there's more than, if you had more than one car between the bays, I mean, so, you know, if you've got a car in the bay, one behind it, um, I don't know what you'd do with the second car.
They always usually just form a line.
Yeah, that's, they're, they're assuming that you've got four cars in the bays, and you've got four cars queuing up behind them.
So, but the question is, what do you do?
What do you do with the next one? The car for that, and the car for that, and the car for that. How long does that line get before it becomes?
How would they queue in, too, because it's not like they're all gonna just pick, you know, pick the bay themselves, either. You're gonna have that, you're gonna have that lineup, there's gonna be something where somebody, there's gotta be an intake somewhere. You have so many cars coming in, there's gonna be that intake point, you know, and then there'll be probably somebody to, you know, either direct them or take the car themselves, you know, to move it to that location. How is that, you know, more or less, I think it's, what's being asked for is how is that gonna work? How's that, how's that circulation gonna work? Is, you know, is it all gonna come to one spot and stop, you know, and then what happens if you have more than?
Eight or ten cars.
A couple of cars behind it, queuing in behind that one, you know, before they're, you know, queued in in front of a bay somewhere. You know, at what point does that line then impede the circulation around the building? Or, you know, around the property, for some reason, so, that, those are the questions, I think, that are looking to be answered at this point.
I guess the one question, I know, I think Valvoline in some locations allow the customer to remain in the car at the time it's being serviced, do you know if that's what's proposed here, or?
I believe it depends on the service.
Okay.
Cause there, there are different tiers of service.
Okay.
But that is something that we can clarify.
Okay. And, and, you know, one of the other things is, um, in these locations, um, if they provide inspection services, you know, DMV inspection, typically, they only have one bay where that can be done. So, you know, you probably wanna locate that inspection bay.
Well, that's a, the inspection machine is mobile, it's on wheels, it can go to any bay in there.
Well, what I'm saying is, you wanna have it in a location where it's gonna create the least queuing issues. So, um, you know, which would be probably the furthest from, from the entrance. You know, to give you the most queue, but that's, you know, that's the thing here, cause the, if, if you're looking at the site plan, the first bay as you come in, if you stack two cars, it may be difficult to get in the entrance.
That's, that is our concern, that's why we want a circulation plan, just to see.
Do they plan it and do it state inspections?
I believe that is the typical offering, uh, but that is something that we can clarify for this specific location.
Okay.
And then the other issue with respect to parking, you know, the, the site plan here is really just for one loca-, you know, this, the area where the Sonic was, but if you go on the opposite side of the drive aisle toward Goodwill, there's a whole bunch of parking spaces over there that are never used. So, I don't know what, you know, you could, you could certainly use it for employee parking.
Right.
You know, assuming that they have the right in their lease to do so, but, so part, you know, the number of spots here is not necessarily germane, if they have the ability to.
Right, it'd be more for the, right, it's, it's, you know, the parking, the, the static parking's more for the, the employees, like you said.
Yeah.
And then everything else, everything else is more or less, it's just the, it's the queuing into the, into the service area is more the question.
Right, yeah.
I mean, if you can address that, that's probably the biggest, that would probably alleviate a lot of the problem, you know, and get through this portion of it. Other than that, I think that's all you had right now, Malcolm, just with that? Okay. Just go back here, I think the engineer had a couple of, uh.
Yeah, they, they addressed most of our previous comments, but, uh, they had a geotechnical report done that, that was submitted with this latest package, and in that, there was some recommendations based on what they found, uh, for both during construction and post-construction to handle the potential high perch water table. So we just asked that you add to the plans how you intend to deal with that, both during and post-construction. And we also mentioned the, the circulation plan as well, so.
Yeah.
The only other thing I can think of is, um, it's an unlisted action, we haven't decided if we will pursue coordinated or uncoordinated, given the lack of, of interested and involved agencies, um, I think it makes sense to pursue an uncoordinated review, I can't think of a reason.
That's an uncoordinated review.
We would need a coordinated review, I just wanted to raise that to the attention of the board and,
Okay.
Have us decide on that.
Do they need Health Department, I mean, it's, they'd have municipal waters.
We, yeah, we, we had a conversation with, with both the engineer and the Health Department. The only thing they need to have approved is their own backflow presenter. And that's either gonna be done by the Village Water Department, or the Health Department, if the Village Water Department doesn't have the time to do it, so. The Health Department is aware of it, uh, and I believe, I believe you guys might have already reached out to, to the Village regarding that, so.
I mean, we can go coordinated and circulate to them, I don't know if it's.
I'm not sure you really need to, I mean, they, they won't, they won't turn the water on to this base.
For their purposes, it's a type-two action.
It's almost, it's, it's, basically, it's pretty much an existing site.
Right.
It's not like it's a new water connection.
No, it's a type-two action for the village.
Right, it's just the, the hazard.
Yeah, they got a backflow.
Because, you know, the auto use, they, there was probably a double-check valve for Sonic, they're, they're, they're probably gonna need to put in an RPZ for this use. But Village will be all over that, they won't let them, you know, turn the water on until that's all done and finished.
Okay, so there's really no, there's no need for a coordinator to review then?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's the only other approval, right?
I think so, yeah.
Everything else?
Everything else is so developed that, you know, we're not creating any impact.
Okay. I'm just trying to remember with this one, did, um.
Does this require bulk control installation?
We would have tanks that are 200 gallons or else.
Okay, so.
So this one also includes a, so it's a site plan and special use permit. You believe we are required to have a public hearing for this? For special use permit?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that, because I don't remember if we even discussed any of those items.
I think we've been waiting until we had finalized the site plan before we advertised. That being said, I'm curious what the circulation analysis, I mean, you may choose to move the building, you may look to share parking with the surrounding lot and reduce the parking to better allow for circulation, I mean, I don't, I don't know that the conceptual site plan is finalized at this point, um, I don't know if we wanna wait for the public hearing, or?
I mean, I don't see a need to, I don't see a need to wait, I mean, if it's, again, it's a commercial property, it's not bordered by any residential, you know, I don't anticipate any, anything from the public for, you know, for this. You know, again, it's a, uh, yeah, it's pretty much, there's really no major items here. If we're close enough in the process, you know, we could just go ahead and do it, you know, as long as they're gonna follow up on the couple of items that need to be addressed beforehand, um, cause we'd wanna be able to, you know, have that, um, circulation plan to, uh, you know, to review and discuss, um, and then that'll put you that much closer to getting a final approval.
Okay.
That, and also the, I mean, I guess the variances, that becomes the other issue. Cause even with that, I guess the zoning board would handle, you know, the secret on the, on a sign variance on their own, then? Okay. All right. So do we wanna move this forward for a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. I asked the secretary, what would be our next available dates?
I'm sorry?
Okay, sixteenth work for you?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right, so, um, someone wanna make a motion to schedule a public hearing?
Someone?
May, may that be May the sixteenth? All right, motion's made, seconded by?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed, in case the motion carries? All right, so, schedule.
And I would just ask the applicant, just when he submits the variance application, if he copies the planning board, so that the planning board can weigh in on the variance before the ZBA, since we're not doing a coordinated review.
Okay. That would be, uh, fair enough. So we'll just, uh, that way when he makes a submission, we can review it, we can make recommendations to the ZBA before, you know, they make it to. Yeah, you're right, yeah. All right, so you do, but they already, it's been already made?
Yeah, I'm gonna need to look at it to see, you know, the recommendation was to, to come to you. And maybe you, you might not need to go back to the ZBA for the signage, that's how we like to do it.
So the, the submission to the ZBA has not been, they, they've submitted to you, we have not sent it to them?
We have sent to this, this, the X, X amount of signage.
Yeah.
And, you know, the recommendation is come to them, you know, you know.
Oh, as far as a waiver?
The signage, you know, you may not even need to go back.
So we should handle signage? Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know what that, okay, but that's, that, the signage was in, that wasn't in this submission, correct?
That wasn't in the submission, I don't recall reviewing any signage in this submission.
So that makes it kinda awkward here.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it, that's, nobody was anticipating to talk about signage this evening. I can see anything about that.
Can you bring it down to sixteen?
I mean, we, I mean, we could talk about it. But that pushes them, they'll push them back with the ZBA a little bit, correct?
Well, unless, unless, unless you, the planning board grants a waiver.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I mean, what's being submitted is pretty much a hard set. You, you want all the signage that's gonna be in the submission, or?
In this, in this package that we're submitting, yes.
It, it, it is what the board looked at with the initial submission, unless I'm mistaken, I mean, it's, it's all the same signage that they asked.
It's all the same, nothing's changed.
They haven't reduced it and then asked for variances.
Right.
They're asking for the variances.
So they didn't do, it did?
They didn't modify it and are still asking for some variances.
So there's nothing, so there was no reduction?
They took what they submitted to you, and they're asking for those variances.
Okay.
Was there a reduction?
Two, yes.
Okay.
By two signs?
Yes.
Yeah, but they're two, they're two smaller, they're two smaller signs, I guess, right?
We have, uh, requesting total of two signs along the principal street totaling 136 square feet, and an additional nine square foot wall sign on the south elevation.
Were you not asking for a freestanding as well?
I do not believe that we are asking for a freestanding.
I remember that, oh, I thought it was still on the plans. On the bulk table, the plans have an itemized list of the variances requested, which I guess are not the same as what they're. Interesting, okay.
So it wouldn't have to go back.
Then maybe we should entertain it on the sixteenth.
So the worst, so here's what we do, I guess, the worst case. So, I mean, the worst, so here's what we do, I guess, the worst case is, you know, send out the, send the information out to all of us.
Okay.
I mean, we have the date set now for the public hearing, you'll be here that date anyway. The worst-case scenario is if we don't, if we can't come to, you know, if it, if it ends up being, we feel it ends up being a little excessive still for what's being proposed, at that point, again, you can go to the ZBA, ask for the relief, you know, and it doesn't affect anything with us, you know, because if you decide to go that route, you would need to get a, you know, be a condition of getting an approval to get that ZBA variance.
Okay.
All right. So, we will go down that route for now. All right. And...
And so, if they update the plans to reflect what the variance...
Right, you're going to have to, yeah, yeah. Yeah, as much information as possible, like I said, on circulation plan and, and it looks like the sign, you know, the signage, I mean, the rest of it, it sounds like, it sounds like you have it under control and it's just the, the ground, discharging the groundwater, you know, that the engineer brought up tonight, so.
Okay.
Kind of get those things together, we'll see you on the 16th tonight.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay? Okay. All right, so with that now complete, there's no more on the agenda this evening?
I'd like to ask that the board have an attorney-client meeting so that we can discuss some litigation. I'd ask the...
Okay. So, uh...
The board, the planner and the engineer will stay.
So, attorney would like to go for a, okay.
Do we have to close?
What was it?
No, you can't adjourn until you come back out.
Do you want to give the argument?
Oh, no, we're going to need to come back out and, and vote on something after the fact?
No.
No?
You just can't close the meeting, I guess, in person.
No, we're not, we're not going to get any action, I just...
Right, we can't adjourn, we can't, we can't adjourn at this point.
Right.
We're going to go, so basically, we need a motion to go, an executive session to discuss litigation with our attorney.
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
We have to leave the room or we're doing it?
No, you can stay here.
We stay here, we just got to make sure...
Just ask to turn off the...